You were ready when you are.
Ready? Okay, I will call the April twenty fifth meeting of the Morgan Hill Planning Commission to order. Jenna, could you do the roll call and the declaration of posting?
Thank you, Chair Mueller. Commissioners, Chair Mueller.
Here.
Commissioners Tonda.
Here.
Habib.
Here.
Lake.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Kumar.
Here.
And Downey. Do not see Downey present. Tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with Government Code Section five four nine five four point two.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Lake.
Stand. Congratulations.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public comment on non-agendized items. Members of the public are entitled to address the planning commission concerning any item within the Morgan Hill Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Exception for certain specific. Except for certain specific exceptions, the planning commission is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Jenna, could you let people know how they could participate?
Thank you, Chair Mueller. If you're joining us today using Zoom and wish to provide public comment, you may do so by using the raise hand feature. If you're calling and using your phone, you can use the raise hand feature by dialing star nine and then dialing star six. You can also send us an email at PCpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov. And if anyone in the public has comments, feel free to come up to the podium here on non-agendized items. Thank you.
Seeing no one coming forward, do you have anybody online?
We have one caller, phone number ending in seven zero nine on Zoom.
Okay. Would you wish to speak now?
Good evening, everyone. My name is. My name is Fambaneguas and I am a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union here in Santa Clara County. Carpenters join this organization because they desire to learn the craft of carpentry. They desire to earn a livable wage and have a beneficial career. Our members are part of great communities all throughout Santa Clara County. That is why I believe labor standards language is critical for future projects. It should be used as a guideline for developers to follow. Specific language like apprenticeship, healthcare, and local hire would set the standard for developers when it comes time to bid on a project. Our members go through a carpenter's apprenticeship program. The program has a duration of four years and allows members to learn skills on the job and in a classroom setting with certified instructors. As they progress through the apprenticeship, they also obtain college credits. All this is done while earning a livable wage to provide for their families. Apprenticeship programs elevate the living standards of individuals by providing a debt-free education. With this in mind, carpenters would be able to secure jobs in their communities and give them a sense of purpose and belonging. Healthcare is an important part of this language since roughly fifty percent of California construction workers rely on some type of public assistance to be able to provide a type of healthcare for their families. The lack of healthcare is a reason that keeps workers away from the industry and creates a shortage in the workforce. Healthcare is something that is provided to our members during their journey. I am sure anyone with a family knows the importance of having healthcare and benefits along with earning a livable wage. Local hire would benefit the community several ways. Carbon emissions would be reduced since less miles would be driven to get to work. The families within the community would have a better work and life balance, which would allow for a greater quality of life. These families that help make up the community would have more opportunities for community involvement. The tax dollars of these residents would stay within the community because they wouldn't be commuting. By implementing labor standards language like apprenticeship, healthcare, and local hire into future construction projects, a level of standards will be created and cultivate a responsible market. The bar will be set for developers in this county. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Jenna, do we have anybody else?
No more hands.
Okay, I will close the open public comment period and we'll go to orders of the day. We basically have two items. I think the orders are fine. Okay, with that, we'll move to the minutes approval for March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to approve. Have a motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Jenna, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Mueller.
Yes.
Commissioners Tonda.
Hi.
Lake.
Yes.
Habib.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Kumar.
Hi.
Motion passes six.
Yeah. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the main item tonight, a public hearing on the request for a conditional use permit to demolish and redevelop an existing gas station. Tiffany, staff report, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Give me one second to upload our presentation here. All right. My name is Tiffany Brown and I'll be presenting the second item on tonight's agenda, which is a continuation for the request of a conditional use permit for the World Oil Gas Station. We're going to provide a quick overview for those that may have not watched the meeting last, and then we'll dive right in where we left off. So the project site is located on the northeast corner of San Pedro and Monterey, and is approximately a half acre. The general plan and the zoning designation of this site is mixed-use flex. This gas station has been here since nineteen sixty-three. After quite a few zoning code updates since then, our zoning code now requires a conditional use permit for gas stations, which is triggered by the gas station remodel. The current hours of operation are from six AM to ten PM. The project request is to demolish the existing gas station with four pump stations and the small convenience store. And we developed the entire half acre site with a six pump station and a larger convenience store. And the request to have it as a twenty-four hour, seven days a week operation. In front of you is the conceptual site plan, just to align everybody. So here's Monterey Road. Here's San Pedro. And at the corner here, they're introducing landscaping. This is the driveway entrance in from San Pedro. Here are the gas station pumps. And they've relocated the convenience store closer to Monterey Road with parking adjacent to the residential neighborhood here. And that's about it. They are reducing the size of the entry along Monterey to match the width of the size along San Pedro. There is a rendering of what the site would look like if you're standing at that corner of the intersection looking north. And here is a rendering of the store. So dying in from our last hearing at March twenty-eighth, after receipt of the report and presentation and testimony from the public, the item was continued to further discuss the air quality analysis that was completed and exposures to potential hazardous air pollutants, review of the transportation analysis, and also review the potential noise and lighting exposure for a new twenty-four hour business operation. Looking deeper into the air analysis quality and to further review it, the analysis looks at the project as a whole, so it analyzes the demolition, reconstruction, and the ongoing operations of the gas station. The analysis talks about a variety of type of air compounds that are known as hazardous air pollutants and are identified in the report as tax or also a bunch of acronyms that you'll see within the report. These types of air pollutants are federally regulated and also by the state, and they identify acceptable thresholds that persons could be exposed to these where they're considered a lesser risk. Some of these agencies that make these standards include the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the California Air Resource Board, and the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. In the report, there is a map that identifies both a red dot and an orange dot. The red dot specifically is specific to a cancer risk, and so we're going to talk about that one first. You'll see on the map there's the MEI, which is maximum exposed individuals, and there's a location on the map. And you'll notice on that map, it's not located like next to the project and it's not located everywhere. It's located really in one spot on that map, most, most north, not really even adjacent to the project site. So the study is utilizes a modeling program that goes off of prevailing winds for air vapor. And so it's the way the air passes through the property and how it identifies where there are areas that could provide that potential risk. The project cancer risk impact was calculated over a thirty-year period, which is a lifetime exposure period per Bay Area Air Quality Management Guidance. And the station operation was predicted using a screening tool that represents the homes closest to the station. A little bit more on the red dot. So unmitigated levels are below the Bay Area Air Quality Management District risk thresholds. And with mitigations, the levels drop even further from that threshold. The cancer risk under the project construction is four point six out of one in one million. And the operational cancer risk after construction is complete is one point seven four out of one million. Now we're going to talk about the orange dot on the map. This refers to particular matter and does not travel as far as air vapor. So you'll notice on the map, it is still based on the prevailing winds, but it's a little bit closer. The note is that there's potential construction impact identified far below the Bay Area Air Quality Management District threshold and is only during construction. There is no part, there is no project impact for ongoing operations. So the impact for that is based on pounds and it is a threshold of fifty-four. And the project is not producing the one. It's a point zero seven. For ongoing operations, the authority goes in and discusses. Well, it's still, it's still regulated by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And what they do is before a gas station can construct their station, before they could put in pumps, before they can do anything, they have to show their proposal to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and receive a permit that is the authority to construct. And so what that plan does is it, it's a fuel plan that allows a certain amount of throughput for each gas station. Throughput is the amount of gas being pumped through the dispensers into the vehicles. And that throughput is influenced by the surrounding uses to the project. So when new pumps go in, they have to go there first and get approval of the throughput and they know who is around the adjacent gas station before they could even receive approval of that permit. And the new equipment is inspected and required to meet current Bay Area Air Quality Management District standards. We talked a lot about mitigations at our last meeting, so we wanted to go ahead and briefly summarize those. A lot of these mitigations are standard mitigations practices that we do to make sure no one is exposed to health risks during construction. So the first one, prior to grading permit, a site management plan is required to be reviewed and approved by the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health. A health and safety plan is required and implemented by the site's safety and health officer. Prior to issuance of the grading permit, additional soil sampling in compliance with the California Department of Toxic Substances Control process is required. So there's many steps and many hats that are professionals going in and reviewing this project at each step within the construction phase. Couple more for you here. Any removal work shall be completed by the California Licensed Hazardous Waste Control under supervision of the professional geologist or engineer if required. That means if there is contaminated soil. Additionally, if soil sampling requires removal consistent with a removal action work plan, post-remediation sampling will be required to confirm soil has been removed to meet the approved soil cleanup levels. And then lastly, prior to demolition of structures, a certified asbestos and or lead risk assessor is required to complete an asbestos and lead survey. So this is for the building for really old structures. That is a requirement. We also talked a bit about transportation and the amount of trips that this project would generate and also the traffic on Monterey and the specifically the intersection at Monterey and San Pedro. The analysis identifies that this new project has twenty-three net new vehicle trips in bone and out there. It also, we can completed a level of service analysis for these two intersections consistent with the requirements of our general plan. These intersections are a low grade now and will continue to be a low grade. And with the new net trips of twenty-three, there is a mitigation action required. This mitigation is to eliminate the left-hand turn from Monterey onto San Pedro by introducing a median. This part, this mitigation is currently a part of the senior housing project that's under construction just south of the project. And it is, it's achieved by each project going in has to pay transportation impact fees. So everybody pays their fair share. And whichever project is completed first, will have to construct the median. So there's an agreement that's offset improvements that's had for each development and whichever one is moving faster, that will, that will be an implementation for that project.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So we will be retaining the left-hand turn onto San Pablo. It's the left-hand turns from San Pablo onto Monterey and from the other side of the street onto Monterey. That will be eliminated by the median. Just want to make that clear.
Sorry, I said that incorrectly. San Pedro, yes. All right, so lighting and exposure. This was discussed due to a twenty-four hour operation and lighting. So the current lights on the facility as part of the security protocols are on twenty-four hours. That would be the same for the proposed operation. The, at the last meeting, we did discuss the hours of operation where people could actually go into the store. That would end at ten, but they can still buy gas and purchase small items through the service window for the convenience market. So the actual store itself won't be open twenty-four hours. It's really just being able to have gas. And the applicant explained that this also helps with security because it requires a staff person on site for twenty-four hours a day. There is a condition for trees required for the design permit. So since the last planning commission meeting, we incorporated within the condition that for the design review permit, the applicant is required to work with the city on introducing trees adjacent to the residential side of the property. And in that condition, it also explains that they need to be at least twenty-four inch box trees, which is a very larger tree and could be in height that would go over the height of the existing wall and help mitigate some of that lighting that might be seen from their homes. They also provide a lighting plan that shows that the lighting candle footprint is on the ground and not bleeding off to any other properties. Noise exposure was also brought up at the last meeting related to the air pump and water dispenser that is located on the northeast corner of the project site. Again, current hours of operation are from six to ten and the proposed hours are the twenty-four seven, seven days a week. Well, the noise study, it did study the air compressor and the decibels and everything is within the standards that are allowed for the type of zoning and it's, it's within the range. However, the property owner was willing to look further at different types of generators that could be purchased that are really quiet generators. So if it did happen to go off in the middle of the night because someone needed air in their tire or water, it should be really, really, really quiet in comparison to your typical standard generator. There was also other ways to mitigate it by putting something around the system. So it's in some type of enclosure that really muffles that sound. But it is required by the state to have air and water available when the station is open. So if it's open twenty-four hours, that would need to stay open as well. So in summary, the, the property is investing in itself and construction will need to take place soon. So right now the, a couple of the pumps need to be replaced and the tanks do need to be replaced. The property owner is looking into that and thought, well, while we're doing this and we're going down and replacing takes, we might as well improve the entire property and make it nice. So that's what brought him here today. The cancer risk is under the project, the cancer is under construction and operationals combined are significantly below the Bay Area Air Quality Management District threshold. The new equipment will ensure consistency with current state standards. And also the allowed throughput is the same no matter the number of pumps because it's a maximized amount of gas that could go through. So if, you know, there's five pumps that pump it faster than it is what it is. They only get that amount of pump. And again, this is the summary of the findings for a conditional use permit. That was also summarized for you in your staff report and within the resolution. And staff was recommending to open and close the public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the mitigated NEDDA. The mitigation monitoring report and the conditional use permit subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. We do have the applicant here tonight and his architect engineer. We also have the consultants. David J. Powers is here. And we have the noise and the air quality consultants here as well. I don't know if we could see them on our screen. Yep, okay, perfect.
And our traffic, our city engineer is also in attendance if there are any questions.
That's right.
Hey, questions?
I have a couple of questions, but they, they primarily revolve around the red dot. And I understand after reading the material, I think what you said. And it just been, isn't at all clear to me why we came up with a red dot because what I understand, what I understand, red dot dash cancer risk, which sounds pretty ominous, but it really isn't, I guess. That it reflects the wind and all the other things that focuses it on one of the properties in this area. And the cancer risk under construction during the couple of months that were under construction is four point six out of one million, which I'm not exactly sure what that means, but it, it doesn't sound like it's really high. The cancer risk is one point seven four out of one million operationally. In other words, the accumulation over thirty-year period, I believe. Okay. And that both of these figures or each of these figures is below the Bay Area Quality Management District risk thresholds.
Correct.
Then I, I don't understand what the purpose of assigning a red dot to one property that is below the threshold of the Bay Area Quality Management District, like all the other properties in the area. What's the purpose of the red dot?
And we have the consultant online and they can answer that question for you as far as why they put it in the report, but I believe it's for clarity and.
It, it's part of the modeling. So the modeling is looking at a thousand foot radius and that's where the highest numbers would be. However, none of those numbers hit the threshold under the air quality management district. And the numbers that are in those tables are if there were no mitigations put on the project, unmitigatable numbers. So I just wanted to make that clear before our representative from Ellingsworth speaks.
Okay.
Let's, let's ask the consultant.
Yeah, maybe the consultant can clarify the purpose of a red dot, maybe this, when read by the members of the public in Morgan Hill.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. James Reif with Ellingsworth and Rodkin. The construction analysis was based on actual modeling where we predicted emissions from construction equipment working at the site and then using meteorological conditions. And the way the wind blows typically blows in Morgan Hill, you're going to see that you're going to see the highest impacts are going to occur typically downwind of where, where the activity would occur. And that's what's reflected in the red dot. And the way these analyses are done, typically because they're done for a number, you know, all types of land use projects, whether it's construction of roadways, large buildings. This is a typical method for doing it. And the red, the purpose of the red dot is to reveal where that location would occur. And that's for construction. Modeling a gasoline fueling station is pretty complex. And the first step we did is to use a screening tool that the air district uses, and that's based on distance. So what we did is we just used the distance to the closest residence, which is basically at the edge of the site. And then added that to the construction impact or combined it. Now, there is another impact because you saw a red dot. There's also another impact and that was shown with an orange dot and that's from particulate matter. That's the dust combined with exhaust from construction. And that disperses a little bit differently because it's really close to the ground. It's not coming out of exhaust pipes. And that's why you have a slightly different orange dot shown on that map. But those, the levels that are presented in the report present the maximum level anywhere near the site where a sensitive receptor such as a resident would, would occupy.
So. Did I call one, Joe?
Yes.
All right. I, I, I think you mentioned, or maybe you did not, that every project that you do, some property gets a red dot because it's the maximum for that project. Not saying it's good or bad. It's, it's just the maximum for that project?
That's correct.
Ah ha. So a red dot just means the maximum. It could be a maximum, but still relatively good. And in fact, that is the case here.
That's the case here, yes.
Okay, once again, I, I think for a typical person reading it like a realtor who's looking at, at this piece of property for their. Who's looking at at this piece of property for their uh client. And they see a red dot that says cancer risk. Uh, they, I don't think it's intuitive at all that they would understand. But the red dot does in no way mean it's hazardous, does no way mean it possess uh it it has a. Uh, it unusual risk for cancer. It's just relative to everything that else is going on, the uh maximum pollutants or whatever. Uh, uh, will be on that particular property.
Yes, that's that's where it's predicted to be the highest, but in this case, it's below below the threshold.
Yeah, I would just, you know, with that clarity. Uh, it's to me, that's the first time I've heard that. And I I failed to have seen the red dots on all of the other environmental reports, but I'm sure it's there. That um maybe somewhere for the public record, we could very just very clearly say that the red dot. Does not mean that there's any unusual risk to the exposure for uh cancer causing pollutants. And in some way, very clearly, but very simply explain that. Uh, maybe even wherever the red dot shows up, uh, that that would address a big concern that I have about uh. Providing information that's so technical. That the typical person could not really be misled into what it means.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes we're guilty of writing to our own audience. Um, which tends to be more technical and I apologize.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a question. Whether or not it's a high enough threshold or low enough threshold. Uh, the orange and the red. Dots, can those be mitigated during construction by building a temporary screen or wall? Because I think you said that the modeling you did. Uh, took into consideration the the wind and where the dust would travel. So would that take care of the issue if a temporary construction screen? Were put up during construction? Would that further mitigate? The dots that are orange and red, in your opinion?
Um, it would to some degree, um, the most effective. Method in reducing um. The the most significant emissions from construction is site watering. When you have disturbed earth or you're disturbing the earth is to actually water the site. Um, we doing a study like this. We identify the impacts with no controls and then we assign, then we prescribe impacts that are necessary. To reduce the impact. And using the measures that the air district requires um for this type of project. Is sufficient to mitigate it. So it doesn't necessarily include putting up barriers.
Okay, so what I what I'm hearing you say. Is that as part of the construction protocol. Mitigation measures would be put in place to actually take care of that red dot and that orange dot. Whether it's uh, you know, I just mentioned the screen, but you're saying there's a more effective way, which is watering. Uh, the the earth and that would be put in place as a protocol as part of the construction.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to add, there's a mitigation measure, MM Hazard two point four. That relates back to the dust control requirements as part of the overall site management plan that's required to be. Approved by the county as part of this work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh. Do you have any feel for how how effective that is?
Um, the measures or the. Or watering is a.
Well, yeah, so if if keeping the soil from the dust and stuff from blowing around, you you make you keep it wet. Right? Or damp to a certain extent. How effective is that? What's the impact on the risk?
Overall, it's about. It's about fifty percent. Um, but at times for um particulate matter, it can get up as much as ninety percent. There there's a. The the emissions that occur from construction vary based on weather conditions. If it's windy. Then the watering is far more effective. It becomes like ninety percent. Sometimes we have calm conditions and it's less effective, but it is, it is quite effective. For reducing it. So we tend to provide about fifty percent reduction in. In the um emissions of um what we call particulate matter.
Okay, and do you know, because I think you modeled it in terms of equipment. How long a period are we dealing with when we have? Contaminated soil potentially until we're dealing with new soil, which would be maybe better?
I think um it's only, I I don't have the construction schedule in front of me, but it's it's not very long because it's a pretty small site. Um, and usually it's, I think the the excavations are pretty isolated.
Okay. But the 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 wetness and the damping, that's a pretty standard condition for us on all our construction sites. To keep it like that when we have uh. Uh, dirt or traffic traffic around it. It's just pretty normal, even beyond what. The county may require due to the fact of the hazardous site.
Sure, usually a requirement of a grading permit.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have questions?
I do have one. So I, my question is, the risks are based on. A hypothetical risk, right?
Um, they're ba. They're based on, you know, a lot of research by the state as. It's the Office of Health Environmental Hazards Assessment. Um, so they study, gas stations are are a common. Source of emissions in in, well, gas stations and construction. I go to gas stations first. So the the contaminants are what we call toxic air contaminants from. Gas stations are well studied, their health effects are studied and. Those are inputs that go into our model. The models are are. The these type of models have been used quite frequently over decades and it only improved over time. So the missions and that make up the best, you know, the best available information we have. So, uh, and that, but the assessment, wherever there's an uncertainty, we try to. But to err on the conservative side, meaning we bias.
Absolutely, sure.
Their impact. And the threshold is the one that, you know, agencies such as Bay Area Quality Management District. Have have agreed that that's a level where if you're below that, it's not a concern to them. If you're above that, it is a concern. And I have to mention, restate that. The gas station portion of the project will be reviewed by the air district because they have to issue a permit and they'll go through this process too. For the gas station part. Of predicting cancer risk.
Okay. I think I have one follow up though. So Tiffany mentioned that the tanks needed to be retrofitted and several of the pumps. Do you have any information on what the output is of pollutants on the existing? Station? Because I'm sure the the new equipment will be much more efficient. Then what's there now?
Yeah, in terms of air quality, I can't comment on that because I'm, we just didn't study what the old station is, but. New stations have to be retrofitted. California is the most um stringent rules probably in the world for. Gas stations um. Regulating every part of the emission process, whether it's just the filling, there's vacuum. Filter pumps to to make sure you you know, you could fill up your gas tank now and not smell gas. It's just, it's all designed not to let any of these vapors escape into the atmosphere. What's there now? I'm not sure because there is a lot of stations where we're required to be retrofitted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got one follow up. Uh. How much does the new standards for diesel? Equipment and trucks uh help with this?
Um, well, there's in fueling stations, the vapors from diesel actually are. Fairly harmless. It's gasoline that is the most harmful ones. You can smell diesel. It's a sulfuric compounds that are. Quite odoriferous, you could smell them, but in terms of vapor, there's very little toxic toxicity coming off of them. Um, because diesel is more like an oil. So, but in terms of the vehicles, um. All of the diesel type vehicle, they're. In California has, there's really strict diesel. Um, standards for cars. In fact, you know, um, the Volkswagen case was kind of an example of. How tough it is to meet California's diesel standard. So. In terms of missions coming from diesel vehicles in California, they're they're well controlled.
And how about car? Emissions?
Car emissions, they're very well controlled too. They all now for gasoline. In cars, the the whole car system has a whole, has a vapor recovery system. To keep the vapors within the fuel system, the fuel tank. In fact, that's one of the tests that you have to go through when you get a smog check is they check all those. Check for vapor leaks, um, because that, you know, with vehicles. Just gasoline vapors escaping from from um twenty years ago was a big part of the um. Air pollution coming from cars. And that includes toxic air contaminants. So those are. Well controlled and better controlled. They will become even more controlled from cars because of California's um. Newer regulations to include more electric, it's a significant. Um, proportion of new vehicles to be sold in the future will be electric vehicles that won't even have these type of.
Okay, and and that and that makes the numbers over a thirty year period conservative, right? Because you used a recent vehicle mix uh for the modeling.
Yes, our vehicle mix doesn't, doesn't, does not reflect the new regulations from November, last November that will. Require a higher percentage of electric vehicles. In fact, our models are represent. Kind of an older vehicle mix and not what's actually newer and will be newer in the future.
Uh, Chair, I had a couple of questions for the builder. Is that okay for the owner?
Uh, we'll come up after we get to the public hearing. The first speaker will be the applicant. Okay.
I I did have one question uh for the consultant. Um, so just in relation to the. Operational cancer risk. So is this gonna be a net increase over the current uh cancer risk that's in place? Because I know it was mentioned that the operational cancer risk is going to be one point seven four. Um, is it going to be a net increase, decrease, or at the same? Can you remind me?
It's gonna be, what we're predicting is an increase of point seven and the threshold is ten over operation. That's in addition to the cancer risk from construction, which is temporary. Which is, I believe, four point, I I don't have it in front of me, um. I think it's about four point six.
Okay.
That's well below the threshold.
And in relation to the discussion around the mitigation of utilizing watering to reduce some of the pollutants. Um, you were mentioning that it was about fifty to ninety percent effective. Are there other mitigation measures that are more effective or more consistently effective than, for example, just watering? Uh, given that there is quite a bit of fluctuation between uh how effective that mitigation effort can be, although. It is below the threshold, are there other mitigation methods that may be more effective in that sense?
Yes, um, but for a small site, they become, there's kind of some diminishing returns. Some of these more enhanced measures are designed for large sites like. Multi- multiple acre sites that might have, you know, large excavations. Where you put up wind fences, you've probably seen these in downtown areas. Um, and then there there could be increased watering and increased watering doesn't necessarily mean that you. Improve things, um, because you you could just make a big muddy mess out of the site if you, you know, it. So it almost has to be done selectively. There may be other measures. Here, you know, for instance, say there's um contaminated soil, then it would have to be covered. Um, so it's, it can't be blown away or to control its emissions. So there are specific things. And and there are a list of eight, uh, eight, eight best management practices in our report alone. To minimize.
Great, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move to the public? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, Jenna, would you please let everybody know how to participate?
Thank you, Chairman Muller. If you're joining us today using Zoom and wish to provide public comment, you may do so by using the raise hand feature. If you're calling in using your phone, you can dial star nine and then dial star six to speak. You can also send us an email at P C public comment at morganhill.ca.gov.
Okay, and we're gonna open the public hearing with the applicant. Is there somebody from the applicant who wishes to speak?
Good evening, Chairman and all the councilmen. And my name is John Hunley. I'm from Old Royal. And I just want to little bit summarize about the history of this project. So around about two thousand twenty, we start looking at this property. And that we noticed that we would need to make some changes for for the USD underground storage tanks because the. Uh, warranty is going to be expiring very soon. So. And at that time, we looked at and we decided that, okay, maybe we should do some development in this area while we're replacing the tanks. Might as well, you know, modify the station. So we started the implementation process. Another reason is also that the dispensers that we have are old dispensers that do not have these card readers that you can. The new card readers called EMV card readers. So that's, uh, we are supposed to have it by two thousand end of two thousand twenty one. So. Since we are doing this permitting, we decided not to replace those dispensers yet. So and then in the meantime, we decided not to sell with credit card at the dispensers. So we were waiting for the, you know, this uh project to get approved and do the construction. So that's, you know, and uh I hope that, you know, we can get this project moving and. So we can start the construction progress uh very soon. Otherwise, you know, because we, we have to replace these tanks and all the fueling systems very soon. So that's a, you know, that's what uh dilemma is right now. Uh, regarding the new systems that, the gas systems that when you compare with the old system, I believe one of the. Uh, members mentioned about, you know, how uh mitig, um. Good the systems are in the in the solution. So. Old system have the vapor, which are the vapor lines are single wall. New systems are all going to be undergo um double wall piping with vacuum. Enhanced so that it's monitored, you know, free uh continuously. And that there will be no leak within the the whole system. And whenever there's a small, even a tiny little leak, the system shuts down. So we can um. And then we can verify whether it's a leak or not. And usually, most of the time, uh, we operate a hundred gas stations. And most of the time, it's a false alarm, but at least we always have that protocol to verify. And the AGMD, in the fire department, the environment of health, they're all involved in this kind of. Uh, monitoring on these underground. uh monitoring on these underground storage tanks. So, and then also another point that I want to make is that we have we're putting in six dispensers with twelve fueling positions. Uh, and one of the reason is that not because we want to sell more, but we noticed that most of our customers, when they come to fueling, they leave the car and they go into the store. So we have more space for the customers to come in and, and move look quickly. Because uh one thing is that our gas stations cannot sell more than what are allowed by the A Q M D. So, because our throughput is always going to be controlled by the A Q M D based on our expert mentioning about the risk factors. So in a lot of cases in California, when we sell our gas station, whenever we almost reach the support, we have to increase our prices in order to lower the, the throughput. Unfortunately. But that's how we have to maintain it because we are limited with the, with the permit. So I, and I hope that, you know, this project can move forward very quickly. Thank you very much.
I believe we have a couple of questions.
Yes, uh, thank you, sir. Uh, a couple of questions around, um, and, and this came in from some of the material that the public sent in, but I thought it was um a concern that they have, I think is very valid. One is I think there's currently a six foot fence between the two properties right now. And uh, one of the suggestions and concerns they had is cars parking very close to the residence. So imagine a, let's say at midnight, a Harley Davidson pulling up. I have nothing against Harley Davidsons, but they're not quiet. Uh, the consideration of perhaps like a twelve foot wall that would do a couple of things, reduce the noise, uh, prevent people from throwing garbage over the wall and, and maybe uh help with the light. So is that something that you're open to, have considered, have engaged the neighbors with to see if because some people may not want a twelve foot wall, but I'm just thinking of a six foot wall and people parking. They buy something, they eat it there, and then they just throw it over the fence into someone's yard. So that's, that's kind of what I was raising. I thought it was a valid concern.
So we are, we are very uh considerate of our neighbors always. And we do, you know, want to make sure that we will consider any, you know, suggestions or whatsoever. And if it's feasible, we will do it.
Anything else?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, uh, one of the first steps, sir, if not the first step, is the authority to construct. Right? Have, have you gone through that step yet?
Uh, it's already in the permitting with the A P A Air Quality Management District.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Anybody else have a question of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jenna, let's start with the public and
We have Ray Lemos.
Go ahead, please. Hello, how's it going, everybody? A couple of questions in regards to some of the new uh proposals and findings after having some time to overlook and um contemplate some of the um, presentation. So first and foremost, since we have the individuals here that are representing uh the companies that were conducting the air samples and the modeling. Uh, I'm wondering, cause I'm, I'm not super savvy on this stuff, um, can particular matter and the receptors from the chemicals stick to the surfaces of other materials? Is this accounted into the exposure rate such as contact? I live directly in back of the World Oil Gas Company right now. My wall separates us. There's a lot in between us. So if all this construction is going on, my patio furniture, my pavers, my plants, my garden, everything's affected by this. I can't consume my garden. I wouldn't, would you? So I'm wondering, is that, is that gone into this factor? Because my son has play equipment out there. I have a water toy set up, a tent, um, a water station, buckets where we fill up the water balloons, and we have all the stuff set up with an, you know, an umbrella that's um, uh, not stationary to not block my neighbor's view. You know, we discuss these things with the H O A. So um, it's, you know, it can reposition it. So, and we do these things in our backyard. So we leave those things out there. We don't we don't have any worries right now. The, the current lot has always provided a sense of separation and safety um, from everything that's gone, um, you know, on at the gas station since nineteen sixty-three or whatever it was. And, and that was perfectly fine when we purchased. We understood that. We, we recognized that. That was a part of our decision making. Um, and now with this huge change, like, we understand, we definitely understand, um, with the gentlemen's, you know, they're referring to some of the uh changes to the tanks. We understand the protocols for updating. I think they're called U T C tanks. We understand that they're, you know, probably susceptible to possibility of damage or erosion at this point because they're so old. We understand that. Um, but I would like to find out the, do we, can we pull up where the current location is of the tanks? Are we capable of doing that? And then where the new tanks are gonna go? Cause that's a big concern for me because currently the, the tanks are in front of the store. And I believe the plans show that the tanks are going up against the wall so that the truck can pull in, refuel these areas where the tanks are. So, I mean, I don't know if we have any examples or other cases with other cities or um, you know, projects that are similar that are, you know, we could compare this to because, you know, are other cities and other gas stations moving like purposely and within tent? These huge U T C tanks that carry X amount of gallons, I don't even know the volume. You know, are we moving them closer to new homes in a pre-existing community? Is that something that's standard? I don't think so. Um, it's just, it's, it's very, it's very concerning because um, you know, there's several, there's several things that go with that. Obviously, the health concerns and the receptors and everything, but you know, then again, you know, we just mentioned, I heard the gentleman say about the uh, the sound wall. You know, they're gonna use the pre-existing wall right now to, to build their project and not go on with anything in addition to. The current station where, where the convenience store is, it serves as a, as a sound barrier. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the area, but it protects us, know it, like it or not. It protects us from sound up already. We understand, you know, um, bigger areas to be able to refill your car. Um, understand that vehicles are larger, S U Vs are larger, bulk load vehicles are larger. So the new facility will accommodate to that. But adding pumps, um, making a bigger U T C tanks. I just, I don't know, I, I find it highly irresponsible to put all that right next to the existing homes. Um, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem logical. Um, so, you know, if anything, I would ask that those tanks be removed and stay where they're at. Figure out another way because that truck's gonna park right up against our wall. It's, I don't care what time it's gonna be. I'm already affected by the, by the trash at all three commercial areas, which they can't do anything about. So add on another truck, add on the fact that we can't even enjoy our backyard. And I think the last part of, of what I'm saying, I know I'm going over, but um, we the neighboring citizens of Morgan Hill from this project, we need to get the plans of the intended construction during the highest levels of exposure and the timeframes. This is, this is imperative. We have to have this information. I'm not gonna go out in my backyard with my son and my daughter. If they're digging up this trench with the U T C tank with the highest level of exposure, we need to have that public in- information. It needs to be provided. We won't go outside. It's that simple. We'll make other plans. I'll be gone for the weekend. It's fine. I'm not arguing what has to be done for safety and everything else that goes along with this project. That's not, that's not a problem. I get it. I understand. Um, but we definitely want to have access to that because, you know, um, when we start removing the old tanks and start moving the existing earth dirt, you're gonna lift up, you're gonna disturb. You're gonna do so many other things. I know they use the term model. You know, these are ideal conditions that these tests are performed in. They're not real world tests. When they start digging up the trench and they notice something's wrong, you have exposure rates that go through the roof that aren't calculated.
Right, so you're way over.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Any questions? Okay. Uh, could we ask the consultant about the one nature of the particles in terms of what happens?
Yeah.
You understood the question, right?
Yeah, um. Wha- what we talked about earlier about the ways we control particulates, um, those will be very important i- in this situation, um, to, you know, implement these measures correctly, correctly. These are the measures that the air district proposes. One of them is um that there be clear signage with notification, you know, if there are issues that the public can, has a phone number to call to get corrective actions made. And that signage also has to include the air district's number in case that, you know, um, some representative of the construction company or the city is not responding. They have that remedy to make a complaint to the air district and, and um have enforcement action. I'm not sure from, from the county's side, what enforcement, because this is, you know, there's hazardous waste issues or potential. Um, i- if there, what additional measures they'll have for controlling particulates, but, but the important um, part of this is to control particulates. The mitigation measures in the air quality report um, are recommended by the air district and they're not just for the health impacts, they're also for the nuisance impacts.
Okay, but I think his asking question was, is do they stick? Or do they clean up if they land on equipment?
Yeah, this is, you know, particulates like dirt. Um, they, if, if it's a dirt, if, if the particulates aren't controlled properly, they will, but things will get dirty or they'll stick, just like particulates would. If, if there's, yeah, I mean.
Okay.
On this note, there, there is another mitigation measure hazard two point one. The project applicant shall prepare a site management plan prior to the issuance of any grading permits to reduce or eliminate exposure risk. Um, this is the management plan that's required to be approved by the county, County Department of Health. And should this method would and this plan be prepared, um, the city is giving copies of this report. We will have it available for the public if they would like to read it.
Okay, and the other question was, is they would like to know when the heavy dirt moving is gonna happen early in the project? Will be able to?
That would be part of this management plan and timing and phasing and permitting. It's not during the that we don't have that information. Now the project would need to be approved.
Yeah, but once it's approved, that detailed schedule will be available that can, the public can review.
We would want to work very closely with the, the neighbors to ensure that they're fully knowledgeable about our activities on site.
Okay, uh.
We have another speaker.
Next speaker.
Javier Vega.
Good evening, Council. I won't take up too much of your time because I also had sent over an email a couple of days ago to everybody. Um, you know, we know that this project, project needs to be, you know, completed. The tanks are old. We just wanna make sure that the project is completed with, you know, limiting the exposure to the community. Do everything possible to limit the exposure to the community. You, you know, I, I own several rental complexes and um safety is always number one to my tenants. It should be the same for your uh Morgan Hill residents. Um, the tank locations actually was brought to my attention right now. Did we fill the tank locations? Does that uh one point seven four measurement go up? Um, whenever they, those tank, those tanks being that they're closer to the community? I got a couple of suggestions as well. Um, a twelve foot retaining wall, I think would be uh, at the minimum. Uh, back in December, January, Road Gas Station had one of their dumpsters lit on fire and flames, few, you know, flames, we can see from um, they're coming into our backyards. So now that you guys are moving the fence closer to a community, I think a twelve foot retaining wall is the least we can ask for. I also think a twelve foot retaining wall will limit the noise cancellation um of an air pump. And I think that the air pump should be approved by um, by the city as well. Um, that's great to hear that there's other air pump options that have a lower decimal rate. I think uh, you know, I think the city should give um, a particular pump, you know, suggestion to you know, the builders. Hopefully retaining wall won't, I don't think will completely cancel the lighting going into the thirty foot high homes. But um, if you do a better job than the six foot wall, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any questions? Okay, next speaker.
I don't see any more hands.
No more hands.
Oh, we do have one here. Uh, Joe Bernowski.
Yes, good evening. Uh, so changing the subject matter. The staff report notes that quote, at intersection providing direct access to the project like this one, all project generated traffic is included, including bypass trips. This number thirty-five that you keep hearing is meaningless. That thirty-five number, or twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-three, that was shown again tonight. It sounds small because it is, because it includes the, the um, the pass by trips. Um, so what's not clear is that the traffic consultant and the city claim that they didn't include pass by trips, but it's, it's not at all clear that the level of service, the intersection level of service, which is a requirement in the general plan to approve this project, that it used all the trips. I've given you an email. That's number one. And number two, of course, pointed out that again, this is a project where the senior housing right across the street that was studied by the same consultant was not considered as create, as, as cumulative trips as the existing condition. You know, other cities don't do that. That's just playing games. So I, I showed you the numbers. At A M, there's gonna be, during A M peak hour, there's gonna be eighty-four additional trips coming at that intersection. Now, we're supposed to believe, and, and the current L O S at that intersection is E almost failing at A M and F is failing during P M. And we're adding almost a hundred percent additional traffic with the new project compared to what's coming out of there now when you combine senior house and a larger gas station. And we are tobo- and, and, and this, the, the claim is obviously that the reason that that L O S is so bad failing is because of the quote, long delays turning onto Monterey caused by limited gaps in the traffic flow. And there's absolutely no explanation or analysis how this preventing left-hand turns onto Monterey is going to solve that. Um, you think about it, I wrote in my email that the right-hand turns will probably be the same, and that's probably not true. Because I would suspect, although I didn't have time to go out there and watch, that somebody currently trying to make a left-hand turn uh, probably leaves enough uh room for a car making a right-hand turn to proceed into the right lane, the slow lane, if you will. Now those cars all have to make a right-hand turn to go do this U-turn at spring. Um, and so you could be actually making right-hand turns even worse. It seems highly, highly unlikely and the analysis gives no explanation of how adding the uh raised uh barrier is actually going to uh allow a traffic, peak traffic that is doubling practically uh to, to all of a sudden have the L O S go from failing to pretty good. I mean, that's just not believable. I just want to conclude again that I hope the planning commission understands that this practice of not looking at cumulative effects of already approved project is the equivalent of just closing your eyes, closing your eyes and
Joe, Joe, you're over your time.
Right, and I can see that um, some residents who, you know, are given multiple minutes, but anyways, I, I, this, this traffic impact analysis does not support approving this project. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have the traffic people here, right?
We have our city engineer here.
Hello, Scott. Long time no see.
Is that on or off? It has been a little while, Commissioner Moore. How are you?
I'm fine. Can you help us out, please?
Well, it's, it's, it's more simplistic than I think it's, it's being made out to be, you know, an intersection, any intersection. There are movements, through movements, turning movements left and right. In the case of this intersection, in any intersection, there's, if you count three movements on each side of a four-way intersection, you've got 12 total movements. And in this case, we've got a driveway on the west side, so we'll, we'll call it a four-way intersection. So we've got 12 movements. The most critical movements you have at any intersection are going to be your left turn movements. And your through movements. Because those are ones you're going to have conflict with cross street traffic. In this case, Monterey is the major arterial, San Pedro is the minor. And they have to wait, they're controlled by stops, signs for traffic that are on Monterey. And we've had, you know, an accident history at that intersection for quite some time. With the raised median that were, that will be built with the senior housing project, there'll be, I believe I counted correctly, six move, five or six movements eliminated from that intersection. So out of 12 possible movements, five are going away. Four of those are going to be on the side streets, so they're going to eliminate the left turns, any cross traffic. And you eliminate also a northbound left turn into the restaurant complex slash liquor store. So by default, you're going to eliminate all those movements and restrict that to just a right turn in on the side streets and a left turn off of Monterey Southbound into San Pedro. That reduces your delays. There'll be an increase in right hand turns, the right hand turns, the gaps that are needed to make those turns into traffic are much less than what's needed to cross full lanes of a, of a major arterial. So, you know, yes, some people will go down to Spring Avenue, make a U-turn, which is legal, and there's a dedicated left hand turn for them to do that. But many of them, as, as we talk about many times, traffic's like water. If there's a delay someplace else, they'll, they'll change their direction of where they flow. And they may flow down to Church Street, down to Dunn Avenue. They may go over to Butterfield on San Pedro, they may go south on Church Street to the tenant. So a lot of options. It's going to be a, an enhancement to the location as far as the, the raised median and make it a much safer intersection and reduce delays, period. Regardless of the number of increased trips and I don't, I've kept my ear to the rail on the number of pumps, but there are a number of pumps there. I don't know if those are increasing. But if there's not much of an increase, I don't think there's going to be a delta in the trip generation in the AM for that.
But the traffic study person, right, could tell us what the trip?
They're not here tonight. It was, we had, we were bringing in the local knowledge, yes.
Okay. Okay, but when that study was done, wouldn't have they accounted for approved projects?
They didn't look at, at projects. Sorry, I'm just trying to think back to the analysis. And Tiffany, feel free to jump in if you have any comments. So the, the median idea actually came from an entirely different project. So the voices, school when that went in, the traffic from that project actually impacted this area. And so the median was, was developed and put on as a condition for the senior housing. And then when it was looked at as part of this project, it found that it would reduce the impacts there. And I don't think we properly talked about it during the first meeting. You should have addressed it differently. At going, making F worse is, is not allowed in our general plan, but eliminating F is going to be, which is what the right hand turns do, does make a difference.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Yes.
Yeah, I did have a brief question. I know this was brought up during the public comment, and this was in regards to the cumulative impact of traffic. I think that was in regards to the LOS of the senior living and that having like an impact and maybe possibly having it more of a collective type of impact and maybe doing it that way. Can you briefly talk to that point that was mentioned?
Well, you know, and, and again, you can get down in the nuts and bolts, looking at it kind of simplistically. And I try to do that generally when I'm talking to community members and whatnot, is the fact that if there was, if we ran the median through the intersection, and in effect, we are, there is no more intersection. There, there, in effect, it's a driveway on that side and people are turning in and turning out of that driveway like they do all along Monterey Road for all various uses. There's heavy uses at Rite Aid, right? Do you see a backup there? Do you, there's not an accident history there. The, the, the delays and the problems you see with traffic at intersections is really, again, depending on how the intersection's controlled and the, and the movements at those intersections. So in this case, again, the only thing we're leaving in place is the southbound left turn. Everything else is going away, so it's almost, almost like having just a median through that intersection. So it's a driveway on either side and it's a right turn in, right turn out. And that you can't get any safer than that regardless, regardless of the volume of traffic that may be increased in the area. You know, and we're certainly nowhere near, you know, maximum volume on any of those streets in that area during the AM or the PM. Which is when you, you know, you'd see it.
Can I jump in really?
Yeah.
So I live down San Pedro by Walnut Grove, so on the other side.
Sure.
So I am down that road on a daily basis. My husband's down that road on a daily basis. We go to that gas station a lot of times when we can because it's convenient. Pumps sometimes aren't working because they don't take the card, you have to walk in, it's a pain in the butt. But as far as the traffic, that, making that left turn from San Pedro onto Monterey, terrible, scary. And my, my husband almost got T-boat, T-bowed one time. So I agree, we need, do need to change that. And then, and I think that median will definitely help that. As far as like how many cars are there at any given time, it's not a hugely used road. That gas station right there is the traffic going in and out. It's, it's not, it's not a Cochrane station and it's not a tenant station. It's not this level of traffic. That's like, oh my gosh. And I don't see there being an issue with the senior housing coming in, increasing that traffic or and like, they were saying, if I were to see an increase in traffic, I'm just going to go down another side street to get to Monterey or go a different direction. People change habit, right? So just from my own perspective, being somebody that lives and uses that street and that gas station, the medium is definitely something that will increase the safety of that, that intersection.
Okay.
And then just to clarify, Jennifer, yes, the Hexagon Transportation Memorandum that was completed does include in the scope the cumulative conditions, which it states specifically that it includes the senior housing facility.
Are there any other questions? Any other speakers? Emails?
I don't see any raised hands and no new emails.
I think before we get into planning commissioners discussion, we might want to take a five or 10 minute break.
Commission back to order since we're all here and ready. Uh oh, somebody's asking for trouble. Commission back to order since we're all here and ready. Uh oh, somebody's asking for trouble. So, uh, I guess I've got one question that one of the residents asked, and that was about tank locations. Do we know now?
Yes, so the tank locations currently are kind of near where the the new store would be located. So let's see.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Jenna. So the current tank locations are in this area here. And it was brought to my attention that the trucks that come in and pump gas have the same regulations under Bay Area Air Quality Management Plan. The hose has a vacuum that sucks stuff out. There's a certain seal. The truck has to be turned off when pumping, so it's not sitting there idling, all those kinds of things.
Do we know when they normally get their deliveries?
I do not, but the applicant is here and could perhaps answer your question if desired.
Okay, I only want to open it up for this one quick question if I can. Can you tell us when you normally get your gas deliveries?
Usually when we have residential neighbors around here, we do not drop our gas after 9:00 P. M. So we always have to drop it between 6:00 and 8:00 P. M., the latest.
Okay, sure. Could that be conditioned?
Yes, you can do that condition, not after 9:00 P. M., not to drop after 9:00 P. M. That's normal in some of the gas stations that's restricted by the city.
Okay, and the other question was, where are they now? I don't want to guess. Or are the new tanks?
So the location I identified is where they are now.
The app. No, in the new plan. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You cannot see them on the screen. I can see that, but if you, they are close and under the new parking stalls located.
Okay.
Adjacent. So there's two. Let me.
Okay.
Ask a question to the applicant.
Yeah.
Well, could you remind me when you indicated the hours of your convenience store are?
Currently, we are operating 6:00 to 10:00. But we have requested 24/7, and one of the reasons that we're requesting is the, well, safety issues, security purposes. We do not expect that we will sell any gasoline after 10 o'clock, between 10:00 and 6:00. But we do want to have an attendant at the at the site to look after the station. During that time period, we do not have our store open for customers to come in, but there's a post-tray. Anybody who wants to buy something can buy it. So that's how we operate.
Chair, can I ask a follow-up to that? Um, so have you have you had any break-ins or anything of that nature that would have brought you to the decision of having an attendant there 24 hours?
Uh, when we do not have attendance, yes, we do have break-ins frequently.
Okay.
And now we have seen more and more in in the California area.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure, just a question for Tiffany. Can I make, um, so just to clarify, because this was a question that was brought up by heavier. Um, and this was in regards to the level of exposure occurring during refueling. So just to clarify, given the the mitigations that they have as part of the refueling process, um, there is really no um, increase that we may see as when it comes to the level of exposure during that process of refueling. Is that correct?
Process of refueling. Um, yes, so it's regulated by PAGMA as well.
Okay, and you're saying they have mitigated measures like the vacuuming and so on and so forth to prevent any further pollutants and so on and so forth during that process.
Correct.
Okay. Do we want to entertain one more comment or question?
I don't have any.
Okay, for one.
I did have a question.
Well, the, an audience member is raising their hand. Oh, I tried to try to skip over that. Okay, okay, very quick.
This is in regards to the location of the tanks.
Okay.
I tried to pull that up, but the provided information that they sent provided for all my community.
Right.
How come the location was never provided? How come we could not physically see it?
I can't answer that.
And that's why I brought it up. It's very, very concerning. We have over 660,000 legal cases currently in the United States of America that relate directly to a gas station, the tanks, and any other related incident to exactly what I'm referring to, and the purpose with intent to move it closer to an existing, pre-existing community. That's reckless. In the event that something would happen, that would be catastrophic for everybody that neighbors that wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
The tanks, I'm not sure I'm answering the comment or question, but the tanks are visible on the plans that are attached as the item. It's the, they don't show on the television when we're showing them on the on the screen, but when you pull up the PDF, you can see where the tanks are located.
Uh, could you identify then where they are on the site plan?
All right, so the tanks are here. One, there's one shown right here, and then there's one adjacent to it right here.
And they currently are located where?
They currently are located in this area here, near the proposed storefrontage. With the very light brown lines, is that why we're not seeing it? You know, it's a really light gray.
Is it like?
And it's, yeah, it's, um, you really, I can't see it on this monitor at all, but I could see it on this one. It's a blur. Oval shapes.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, like a cylinder.
Mm-hmm.
It's not, when you think of a tank, you think of it, it's not. They're they're about the same length as the canopy. Yes. Okay.
A question for Jennifer, maybe for you Tiffany as well. Um, so I know during the conversation, we had mentioned the site management plans. Um, do we have the ability to add something to the the mitigate negative deck or, you know, someplace else as part of um, the the process of um, approving the resolution or adding additional measures to it when it comes to the notification of the residents or providing that management plan to them or some other method of awareness that of those plans, you know, whether it's milling out, um, or for example, I know one of the the things that came up during the conversation from the public was the fact that it can potentially stick when it comes to particulates during the construction process, some type of cleanup after the construction process has commenced or other things that we can add, although from my understanding, it's something as part of the county's process possibly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can we do that as part of the commission if we would like to, you know, take those extra measures and make sure those things that were brought up by the public are addressed?
And the the commission can add conditions. I don't think we could add things to what the county needs to do. There are standard um, elements of the site management plan and everything that has to be addressed
Okay.
as part of the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health.
Mm-hmm.
And then the underground storage, take the U S T division. I always get that messed up. Um, but the commission can ask for additional conditions about next steps. Um, there will still be design review, and I don't know, something if you wanted to make any comments about other things that they could add.
No, the the only other thing he, um, the commissioner mentioned was notice, and we could, we could add that as a condition. You just explain to us what you would like to add, and we can do that.
Okay.
Chair, I have a question. So Tiffany, going back to the tanks, I'm assuming that the where the tanks are placed is also governed by regulation and safety mitigations, correct? So the state of California doesn't just allow people to put tanks anywhere where they might think it's reckless or dangerous. Is that correct?
I'm going to defer that question to Jennifer. She might know more about that, or we also have the consultants online. Yeah, I would ask our consultants to weigh in on that. If they can.
This is a Coney Danielson at David J. Powers Associates. I have no knowledge of how the tank siding process works through the the county or the state.
Oh, I think the applicant said he knows the regulations. If you wanted to ask the applicant.
Okay.
The tax locations are calculated by the fire code, the fire marshal, so everything has to be approved through the fire department where the locations are. And there's a sudden setback requirement from property lines and so forth, and also uh, we have to consider about the fire and everything, uh, the ease access to the tanks and also the how how the fuel is dropped at the at the gas station also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think so. Basically, is there much flexibility there? Is there any flexibility to move them a little bit farther away?
Uh, we we already looked at the design and the main, the main reason that the tanks are located is because of the traffic. Because they, we want to make sure that when the tanker truck comes in, they come in, and they have to drop it on the right side of the of the tank, for the tanker to the tanks, and then they have, they can drive through throughout and leave without turning any left turn or so forth. So that's one of the reasons that the tanks are on the on the right side of the of the canopy. One of the things that we can do is that in the actual, you know, final plans that we do, we we may be able to ship as close as possible to the to the canopy.
I think that would be helpful, right?
In the design phase, yes.
Yeah, if we if we can move them as far from the property line as happens and 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 still meet some of the operational needs.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I'm sorry. You might have made a little bit the distance of those tanks. They are not exactly at the property line. They are in the front of the parking. The parking depth is about 18 feet, and I have about another 10 feet of landscape. So the edge of the tanks located about 28 feet away from the property line, the eastern property line. And the main purpose of that location is when we did the truck template, when they come in, the truckers come into the property, they have to dump the fuel on the right side, and they make a left turn to get exit on Montory. If we move them on another location, it'll become difficult for the truck to come into the property and do that maneuvering.
Okay, that's what it is. Okay, so I think I understood that part, but it also sounded like you could maybe fudge it absolutely as far as you could.
We can get them closer, but we cannot also go closer to where the pumps are because the truck has, it might be able to close the right or the eastern two pumps. That's where the trucker can park and still dump on the right side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, well, okay, let's start with the mitigated negative deck. Are there any further questions on that?
Um, maybe just, I think it was Commissioner Lake that had brought this up, and that was in regards to the wind fences. I know it was something that um, was, would be further and beyond what would be necessary for mitigation, albeit, you know, watering is going to be in place. Um, I I thought that was an interesting point of discussion when it comes to the level of concern that the community, I mean, the neighbors were having. Um, I'd be interested in hearing everyone else's thoughts on that when it comes to taking one step beyond just to give them that reassurance, although it's not needed. Although the thresholds are well below what's needed, um, I, you know, that's something I support when it came to the comment by Commissioner Lake and also understanding from the consultant that um, it is a measure that is more protective and more consistent than that 50 to 90% that you get from watering the soils. Or or the other comment that was made was in relation to covering of the contaminated soils. Um, just something that we can do a little bit further and more um, to provide some reassurance to the neighbors.
What we could do is have them, what Jennifer, what is the, or Tiffany, what is the tallest wall they'd be allowed on that property line?
The property line, so the code has a section, um, why did I hold it up special? Because I thought this would come up. Um, commercial and industrial uses shall be screened from adjacent residential zones by decorative or landscape masonry wall with a minimum height of seven feet.
Okay.
So you have some flexibility.
Okay, so what we could do is have them do that out of sequence, have them do the tallest wall they can do and plant the trees, and then start on the rest of the site.
How how high was the wall? Was that a max or a minimum? A minimum of seven feet?
So it's already got to be a foot higher.
I would be wary of, a commoner had asked for 12 feet. 12 feet would really close off all of the the yards and windows that face that fence. So going high, anything of seven feet or higher would be significantly higher than the existing masonry wall that's already there, um, except for the front um, house that has a wooden fence along their driveway. Um, but if you went seven or eight feet, that would actually, um, provide a secondary barrier that's taller for noise and air to a certain extent.
Yeah, I think if, uh, if you think about it, if you do 12 feet, and that might just be too high, and you're you're actually like walling in the community, and then it feels like a prison. There's, you only get shade. You don't get sunlight ever again if you do a 12-foot wall, right? So that's kind of the pros and cons of having a 12-foot wall. You you build a prison, and the residents complain because you built a 12-foot wall. So, but I'm not sure we want to dictate size of wall.
As an alternative, um, you can leave it to design review, and staff can work with the neighborhood to see what height wall that they would want effectively as a group.
I would, I would think that would be a good one, and with the addition of the trees, right?
Correct.
And I don't know if on our tree list, we have the right kind of trees that also help with.
Well, we would be, during design review, we certainly could also consult with the neighborhood and see what they would prefer.
Right, and well, wall plus trees, right, or the right type of tree.
Correct.
In some cases can help with.
Which also would have to comply with our, um, the water efficient landscape ordinance as well.
Right.
So we're not going to recommend lining up with Italian cypress and, you know, creating a green wall or something like that.
And also remember, we had the other question at one time, if we put up trees where the leaves fall, remember that lesson from another project?
And we do have a recommended tree list that we could certainly also get input on from the neighbors.
Okay, so.
Now, street trees are a little bit different. Those will follow guidance, but the trees along.
Trees along the wall.
We'd have more.
So we would have the design review then look at, uh, the trees and how they're placed, and the potential for increasing the wall uh, to some level.
And staff would recommend that you make that a condition.
And then also doing it out of sequence. Doing that first.
Oh, so we're talking about increased wall.
Also, I I think, uh, to go back to what Commissioner Habib had said, is, uh, going over and above with these, during construction, uh, I don't know what the rest of the commission thing, but the 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 dust screen for those particular red and orange sections, those dots, even though you have the the site watering, but just to make sure, since the wind was a concern, uh, let's just, you know, out of a process of an abundance of caution, do do some temporary screens during the construction for those two particular dots, orange and red.
The only thing I would say on that, I've done that a lot. If if it's not a rigid screen like plywood, if you try to use like vinyl, it's so windy here in the summer, it's going to end up like a sail. And you're going to get more complaints about that than you will the actual effectiveness of them. Watering is the standard for earthwork.
Okay.
And dust control.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's one, right? Uh, the other one we talked about is, uh, fuel deliveries are not between, I think, if I understood it right, is 10:00 P. M. to 6:00 A. M. Don't don't take deliveries during those.
They won't take deliveries after 9:00 P. M.
After 9:00?
Yeah, it was.
After 9:00?
After 9:00.
To 6:00 A. M. Okay, so that's another condition that we want to put on there, right?
Uh, and then the tanks.
The tank location moving, uh, as far to the west is feasible.
Mm-hmm.
They're already at 28 feet, I believe the number was from the property line. We'll see if we can't fudge them a little farther.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, then, uh, then closure, uh, or the looking for the quieter uh, air compressor.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that. What, why do you need a, you and I at home would may need a compressor, but don't they sell something that doesn't require a compressor for air? That.
I think that's a state law that there are required.
Oh, it's a state law. You have to have a separate compressor. You can't run it off a 230. Oh, it's a state law. You have to have a separate compressor. You can't run it off a two thirty.
Yeah, it it's you have to be able to deliver water and air. So I think that was the quiet quieter compressor slash enclosure. Whatever works.
Yeah.
Right, to get us the best results. Let's see, that's one, two, three, four conditions that we've added.
Soil during watering the soil.
That's actually in best construction practices that we normally put. That would be in our design review approval, right?
Design review approval and any future building permit approval. It's part, it'll be part of the grading permit and part of continual.
GeoTech would insist on that too.
Right.
And that includes covering of the soils, right?
And that and that's even before the there's other work that will happen, you know, the removal of the top layer of soil. About top half foot of soil, all of that as part of the overall underground tanks and environmental health requirements.
Okay, and the fifth one I can think of is this communication one, so that the neighborhood is clearly informed where we're at in the construction process. Right, because it'll be part of that site management plan. But we'll do something with our website and make sure the neighbors know where to get it.
Yeah, and I I believe Cynthia was mentioning too, is if there's like a radius that we'd like to mail those management plans over to the residents, that may be the just a standard notification area um, of by the construction process.
If we have all the contact information for people, right? But at least to the residents that have been here speaking, we want to make sure that they have it so they can give it to their neighbors or they can help us get the contact information so that we can do that. That's really important.
So you're creating a list of items to pursue or to require, uh, not necessarily by document, not necessarily in the mitigated 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 deck.
No.
For a design review.
No, well, some will turn out to be recommendations to be handled in the design review because there's some discussion. But these will be conditions added to the resolution for the conditional use permit.
Okay, so it's all items.
Yeah.
Regardless of where it may fit into the documentation.
Right, yeah, yeah, because the 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 conditional use permit resolution approves the mitigated negative deck first and then.
Right.
Conditional use.
Well, then I'd still like to add somewhere into the mix of things to do, uh, some type of explanation that I I uh, I'd ask for your indulgence. I I put together a little paragraph that at least makes sense to me. Uh, and would have made it clarified it a couple meetings ago. And that is this for the red and orange dots. It is common practice to either red dot and an orange dot to identify the properties with the highest exposures to cancer causing and or particulate matter associated with the construction or renovation and subsequent operation of a gas station. But dots do not necessarily mean that health risk threshold are exceeded. For this project, the properties with a red dot and an orange dot are below the Bay Area Quality Management District cancer risk and particulate matter threshold during both construction and throughout the operational life of the gas station.
Commissioner Tanda, you just put that in the record. So we have that now on video.
Okay, great. And it uh, obviously you could improve upon it, but it would just be something really clear that uh, we could hand out to anybody happens to cross a document like this and or to be used in further evaluations of this type of uh, a project.
Okay, okay, uh, I'm leaving wording of these various conditions to staff. Uh, are there any other things that we have not thought about?
Uh, yeah, Chair, just in relation to the management plan, um, and concerns for one of the public comments was the pollutants that may have settled. Um, one of the things that um, I had originally brought up was some type of cleanup cleanup process post-construction that they can provide as a um, as a service to residents in a certain area just to help clean up, you know, items that may be outdoors, furniture, papers, uh, things of that nature.
Uh, help me, but isn't that part of the site management? Isn't that in all that other stuff?
So you're talking about everyday operation, trash and things that are there.
Not not every operation. During construction, given that there's pollutants that can potentially stick and stay for the consultant. Um, is post-construction as a part of mitigating some of those pollutants that may be on outer um, furniture or things out in people's backyards to um, you know, provide or at least offer a service to the residents post-construction to, you know, clean up services or anything of that nature.
Thank you.
I I've never heard of that before. Um, so let me, so essentially you would like the applicant to offer to provide cleaning services for the outdoor areas of the residences.
For a one-time post-construction um, cleanup.
I would defer to our city attorney about whether or not that can be required.
But that would be up to the commission to to decide to provide that. Um, but we would need to consult with our consultants as to what exactly that would entail. Um, if there's a best management practice for cleaning. Um, but given that construction is going to go on for a couple of months at least. Um. And I think the neighborhood was expressing concern about being able to use their backyards on a regular basis. Um, and you know, you may want to also think about providing a best management practice to the neighbors themselves as to how to clean the items for use during that construction period, rather than just after construction.
Yeah, I think whichever staff would see, you know, would be the best way of processing that.
Yeah, but I would think our consultants have experience with that type of condition.
Through the chair, this is a Coney Danielson, David J. Powers Associates. Uh, that's not a common condition. I've not seen it before, to be honest with you.
Wow.
Yeah, it is pretty rare, actually. Because if they do a good job managing the mitigation during grading and demolition, it's very rare that that's an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm sure it is something that is infrequent. Um, I'm just basing it based uh, off of all the comments that we received from the neighbors, all the concerns that we received from the neighbors more so than other projects that we see.
My concern is without a model, I don't know how to do it.
I think that becomes a slippery slope as well. If we do it for this, then how many other uh, communities are we going to have to do that for?
Uh, again, up to the commission what they think, but it's something I was thinking through as we're receiving public comments.
I understand the concern, maybe providing information about how. I don't know.
That seems more feasible to me.
Yeah, so maybe.
What what if the condition was that we explore that issue and to potentially require it as part of the design review?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we can examine that further. Typically, uh, P M. Two point five particulate matter, but you hear about that most with wildfire smoke. And about ninety percent of wildfire smoke is a P M. Two point five. So that's why people wore the N ninety-five masks during the fires and make sure that you have those. So it's um, we can definitely look into that. We just don't have the guidelines right now. We'd want to work with our consultants.
For sure. I think that works.
That works.
Thank you.
So that's uh, number six, I think. Okay, now, is there anything else that we've forgotten about? Okay, so I'm gonna assume the five or six conditions that we listed with staff's wording will go into the conditional use part approval. Okay, any other questions? Okay, would somebody care to make a motion?
There, I make a motion to approve them indeed, abruption, the M R, M M R P.
It's all one resolution. Okay.
And approving of the C U P. Did I say that right?
With the conditions.
With the conditions as described by Chair, the five conditions. Quieter uh, quieter air compressors, clear communication to the public during construction. Wall height after cons- consultation with the neighbors during the design process. Uh, moving tanks closer away from the property as far as possible. Free design and placement in consultation in consultation with the neighborhood. And exploring the cleanup guidelines of particulate matter during design review.
And quieter compressor and enclosure or enclosure.
Was delivery gas included in there, the hours?
Yeah, that nine to six P M. Or nine to six A, nine P M. To six A M. Are not allowed delivery.
Okay, and the use of water during construction?
That's part of the best.
That's already.
That's in the mitigation.
Okay, so we're taking two actions then.
No, no.
Those are all the conditions.
Those are all the conditions we're adding to the approval resolution.
All right.
Which covers both the mitigated negative deck and the conditional use permit.
Well, then, you did not include in those items that you listed the uh, use of water. Because that's already included in the site management. Yes, yeah.
It's already there. That's one of our standard rules.
But it's a mitigation measure.
Okay, it's, all right. Okay, repeat the.
We have, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Jenna, would you call the roll?
Yeah, question. Uh, so again, for the nineteenth time, uh, the comments that I made, the description I made that was recorded by video. Uh, is that just something that is still separate or uh, uh, to be done? Or it's not part of this action, obviously?
Correct, and it's it's not a condition, but it is language that will be used um, further. And we will note that as part of any future communication or staff report about a red or orange dot.
Okay.
Um, and we'll we'll put a note in the file as well.
Yeah, and I just suggest this for any resident who may still can be concerned about what's in a an official public document. That if you are concerned, just request staff or something in writing and they could provide that to you, the putting your records. And it it would address any uh, future concerns about, you know, and assertion that your property is at risk for cancer because of what what occurred. And that is not the case at all. It's really misleading. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jenna, could you call the roll place?
Chair Moore.
Yes.
Commissioners Tanda.
Yes.
Habib.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Kumar.
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero with one absent.
Uh, okay, that ends the item. Now, for uh, audience members, either alive or in attendance, if you have some question as we proceeded, what we put in the resolution or that, just contact staff and I'll help you with it. Okay. With that, we'll move on to director's report.
All right, so I was asked to give some updates on a couple of different projects um, that we have working right now. One of them is the Mohai Hotel Downtown. And that is currently going through the building permit process. Um, they have been looking at that they need a uh, a building permit for the fifth floor that they were um, they obtained uh, via city council approval, and so they're finishing that up. Um. And then also an update on Chick-fil-A. So I've also gotten emails on Chick-fil-A, when does it open? So they've just applied for for this application. Um, we are starting um, environmental review on this project and we'll be moving forward with um, an approval. Or depending on what the um, documents show, we'll be coming forward with a consideration, I shouldn't have said approval. Um, for the project, um, depending on what those findings are. And um, it there's not much I can say right now about when it would be open, but following normal timelines and potential issues, I would say that if the environmental is clear, if the project gets approved, we'd probably be looking at an opening in eighteen months or two years, depending. Um, there's a lot of anxious high schoolers who want to know. It's um, it is the the level of interest has been significant. Um, but I always go conservative on my time estimates, hoping that will be better than that versus longer, so. Um, as far as other items to report on, um, we do have a number of housing projects. Um, still moving through the system, a lot of you have seen discussions about our pipeline. Um, we did get our housing element returned to us. One more for one more go around. Um, we fell into the unfortunate circumstance of having our reviewers change. Um, someone quit, the um, review got reassigned to, and it was a person's first review. Um, and we're also operating under a new advisor to the reviewer as well. Um, so hopefully this next go around will be it and we can be done. Um, so we're working diligently behind the scenes to get that accomplished. Um, and that's really all I have to report. We will have items for the next agenda um, in May, so I'll see you back here then, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, maybe for the whole commission, uh, because I don't remember if everybody saw it. What's the status on running commissioner of reappointments or new people?
So on May third, let me, yeah, that's the first meeting. Um, all four commissioners whose terms are up um, have requested to be reappointed. And so the um, intent is to bring that forward to city council for a reappointment without doing a recruitment. Um, and the alternative to that decision, should council decide to, is extend terms and still do a recruitment. So they do have an option. Um, but because all four commissioners asked to be reappointed, that is how we are moving forward with that. Anything else?
I think that.
Okay, that's all.
That's all. Anybody else have anything? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. So it's myself, Chair, Tanda.
Yeah, they're select four, right?
Does she just said?